Showed him that it was.
Yeah.
So.
Here Jesse's here, let me promote him to.
Okay, good. Saved by the bell.
Hello.
Good afternoon, morning, sir.
Oh, it's still morning, I guess, technically. Hi everyone, did I come in incorrectly? Where is that link?
It's fine, you're panelist and co-host now.
Okay. Um, okay, we're quorum, great, because we got started, are we recording yet?
Uh, yes, it is recording.
Okie dokie. Let me just arrange my screen. All right, welcome everyone to the Amherst Planning Board Housing and Zoning Subcommittee. It is October fifteenth, sixteenth, the time is eleven thirty-six AM. We'll start with a, uh, we'll call attendance, please indicate you're here, if you're here. Bruce, pull them.
Yeah.
Fred Harwell.
I am here.
Angus McCollum.
Here.
And I just, I'm here. Excellent. I forgot to send around another batch of minutes, so nothing to approve this time. Um, Nate, I can send them to you just as drafts.
Yep.
Remaining ones, so you can just load them up, then we can try and approve some more next time. Okay. Any announcements? I do not have any, Nate, do you have any announcements for us?
I do not.
Okay. Sounds good. We, as usual, just have a pretty loose agenda. Oh, let me see, there's someone in the attendees. Uh, with the name of AZA MAT, he's a mat, has a mat. Don't know who that is, so hello, if you'd like to join in, please raise your hand and, uh, add to the conversation. I had a couple of thoughts on what we might discuss today. The agenda again is pretty general. Uh, I think we might want to spend some time talking about the upcoming meeting, Nate, I don't know if you wanted to lead that discussion, and we can try and assign some roles, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I also thought it might be good, rather than spending our whole time focusing on North Amherst, uh, to get to two other things. One is thinking more broadly, so using the map that they put together of the different areas. And maybe just spitballing ideas of things that might be a little more comprehensive changes we could think about. And that really taps into the second thing I want to offer for Tom, which was, uh, Angus, have you had any priorities on the zoning pieces for us to discuss? Because I want to start giving that some attention as well. And they're really related, I think. Like, I'm imagining maybe there are some broader zoning changes we can make, or even a more sweeping one for all of these areas together, things like that. Uh, does that sound okay to everybody for a plan for the next hour or so? Great. So why don't we give ourselves maybe twenty minutes to talk about the upcoming meeting? I'll start a timer just to keep us on track. Yeah, Bruce, go ahead.
Um, I've been privy, and I don't think the rest of you have, to a bunch of emails that have been, uh, uh, coming in from people in North Amherst who have been, uh, Kathy has been, uh, basically putting together this, Kathy Shane has been putting together this meeting. Uh, and I think the, uh, the notification went out on the District One Neighborhood Newsletter that there would be a meeting to discuss this. And there was a number of folks who've already chimed in. And I can tell you that the, uh, the dominant sentiment is um, that UMass should be building this housing, we shouldn't be building this housing. And I predict that that is going to be the, uh, the wall that we come up against first. And my sense is that we should, my sense is that that's a um, a wall or a topic or a point of view that is going to derail intelligent conversation. Because I, I mean, it's perhaps not very charitable, but I think it's fact, it's, it's essentially true that or appropriate that this is a bit like, you know, King Canute being carted to the beach by his, uh, folks uh, to command the tide not coming in.
Yes.
Now, we, we never quite know whether that was Canute proving to his, uh, acolytes that there were limits to his power, or whether it was his own hubris. One way or the other, it doesn't really matter. The point is that certain things are not worth discussing. Um, I think.
Yeah.
But, uh, and so. And so I had put together a, uh, a preamble that I was thinking of, uh, that we might give, uh, that basically sets up the conversation. I know we had thought that we would go in by saying here is all of the areas of town that we're thinking about. And, uh, and it's not North Amherst alone, but I'm thinking that might not be the the best way to open this meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I like that idea, um, of a couple of thoughts, and then, uh, I guess I see your hand. One would, I mean, I totally agree, and this comes up all the time in all the conversations. Um, but from my perspective and somewhat unique perspective, wearing multiple hats, at least what I've seen from planning board and these conversations is like you said, Bruce, we just, we, we have very little leverage. We can say that all we want as a town. But my sense is until the council and the town manager maybe get serious about applying some pressure, that's, that's the best we can do, is suggest that that happens.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing I know that you, the university would say is, well, they have launched a long-term assessment and made a call for proposals, and now it's an issue and I'm starting to address it.
Yeah.
But I think, I agree with you, we might try and cut that off at the pass and phrase it as, okay, that'd be great, but they probably won't build enough to solve the whole problem. So we should still address it as best we can.
Yeah, I've got an, the structural outline here, which I can go over, or I could, uh, write it up.
I also think delivering that message is probably better from Nate than from us. Well, certainly not from me. I, I should not be the one, I think.
I, I would be happy to deliver it because it's based on the work that I did for the first six or nine months in joining the planning board when I called out, uh, you know, basically tried to identify towns like Amherst across the country and began to want to understand how those towns were dealing with this problem. And essentially, there were three ways of dealing with it. And I would go into that and, uh, uh, and so, you know, speak, try and speak initially from a fairly high level. And then, as you said, he, here is, we are left with, uh, we are the planning board. We are not Elon Musk, uh, we are not a lot of other things that could do the, solve the problem differently. We are the planning board, and the planning board has this tool, this shovel, this pick, this sickle or whatever. And here's how we think we can use it, and this is what we would like to talk about.
Yeah.
Uh, quickly, I just want to jump in, so I just, um, the, uh, meeting is now October twenty-ninth, so originally it had been for some, you know, there was a date discussed at the planning board meeting, and that didn't work. Um, I'm not available on the twenty-ninth, uh, there's a Civic Academy, so the town's, you know, hosting a informational, uh, meeting, there's like a class called Civic Academy for twenty to twenty-five residents. And on that evening, the planning department and a few other departments are, are giving a presentation. So Doug and Bruce said that they're comfortable without me there. Um, we've discussed having maybe another staff person.
Sure.
Rob Moore and I, but in any event, I think, you know, really, this is right, a, a District One meeting. Um, you know, that they've requested to have some, you know, time to comment on what the planning board's been discussing. And so really, it's not a planning board meeting, which is, you know, which is a nice way to frame it, and I think Bruce and Doug could manage. Um, and, you know, um, so for, you know, Bruce, and I was an email everyone, and Jared said he could help with the presentation, so if we have any ideas for printed material or a presentation, you know, I can help facilitate that and share documents. Um, I think, you know, it's probably going to be a lot of listening and note-taking or, um, you know, idea gathering, and so. I think framing the conversation is really important, and I like Bruce, what you just said, it's interesting, right, how, um, right, probably since the citizen petitions, and in the last two weeks, there's been a lot of conversation about what, you know, whose responsibility is it for housing, student housing specifically, and where and how. I just want to let you know, that's, those are the dates, so October twenty-ninth, that, I think it's six-thirty, uh, in the North Amherst, yeah.
Okay, thanks for updating us on that. Um, Angus, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, I won't be able to attend that night, my wife's out of town, so I'm on baby duty, but, um, uh, I guess I had a couple of questions about the, since the, the, the UMass thing seems to be coming up a lot. Um, I, I guess I wanted to ask you all who have more experience with this and Nate as well for some clarification. Um, my understanding is that UMass houses a fairly high percentage of its student body compared to most public universities. Is that accurate?
Uh, Jesse's probably better, but that's always been the impression that I've been given and been, uh, houses of sixteen thousand, um, that leaves eleven thousand looking for housing, uh, two thousand of which find it out of town and leaving nine thousand, uh, looking for housing as student rentals in the town of Amherst.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I asked that because I, I went to a big state school for undergrad, and they housed uh, five thousand out of fifty thousand, so a much smaller percentage.
Yeah, that is, that is true, and that's always what UMass will tell anybody who asks.
Sure. Yeah.
Um, Bruce, maybe you want to share again that document you put together with this group, just.
That'd be great.
It sounds, it sounds like Angus.
You mean, share the screen now, or just?
No, 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 just email it around again.
Okay.
Bruce did a lot of work collecting.
Yeah, I'd love to see that.
And putting things together in a digestible way.
Yeah.
Especially because the.
Oh, actually, it, it comes out backwards, doesn't it?
The other thing, Angus, is that we had, uh, it was when I first joined the planning board, I guess, two years ago, when we started to work on overlay districts. Um, Tony Marula, Marulis and Nancy Buffon, who are some of the UMass, um, relations folks, came to plenty more meeting and discussed all this with us, and.
Okay.
There were, there were some subtle disagreements about the numbers and stuff, but the overall idea, overall facts seem to be aligned.
Yeah. And I guess the other question that I have, just in thinking about planning long-term, my understanding is UMass has several high-rise student housing buildings, correct?
So southwest, um, are, yes, they are very tall, I think they're twenty-something floors.
Yeah.
Three, four buildings that are that tall. It's a big complex, it's where the majority of the students are housed on campus. Uh, they also have recently, they're, they're kind of old.
Um, yeah, that's, well, that's what I was going to bring up. I guess I'm wondering if we have a sense of how long those, that, that's not the building style anymore. And so I'm wondering when those are going to be torn down, and if so, the town will have a, a a bigger issue with housing because they're not going to build giant.
I, I feel, I feel comfortable in offering that. It won't be like a teardown, sorry, go somewhere else.
Yeah, okay.
When UMass will make, will not drastically decrease the number of students they're housing. They'll figure out a way to build first or redo one tower at a time and upgrade. I, I don't know, any detail.
Yeah.
I don't know if anything's actually planned. I do feel confident they're not going to suddenly say, sorry, all, we have five thousand fewer beds.
Yeah, okay. It's just something that I'm thinking about longer term, as it's on building's age.
Yeah, this last year, lots of grad student and undergrad sort of protests about this issue, so, yeah, it's a, it's a hot topic for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I can also send around the request for proposals that they also put out, in case you haven't seen that. As far as I know, nothing's progressed on that, but I guess about a year ago, there was, they, they made it a big announcement that we're thinking about long-term housing.
Oh, that'd be great. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, and I will incorporate in the, the, this pre, this intro that I draft. I will draft that in the next.
Yeah. Oh, and that other piece, just to say, sorry, friend, on the UMass side, I did offer myself to be involved once that gets going from the UMass side. Because I feel like I'm at this unique intersection of being UMass, being planning board, living in town, like on the edge of campus, having two kids who go to school here, like. So all the boxes I sort of checked on this issue, so anyway. Uh, but again, nothing, as far as I know, nothing's progressed very much. Uh, Fred, please.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of things. One is, uh, I think I can date the southwest complex pretty accurately. I think it's nineteen sixty-four. I give you an idea of, uh, how, how long it's been there, and I, I agree, I don't think there's any immediate likelihood that UMass will decide to tear them down or something. I, I, I don't see that happening. Uh, and the other thing I wanted to mention was, uh, I think Bruce came up with a marvelous analogy to King Canute. And, uh, yeah, that absolutely, uh, just, I think describes the meeting that we had with the UMass, uh, uh, representation. This is one of the in-person planning board meetings. Uh, and, uh, and they, I have to say, uh, based on Bruce's research, they, uh, are, are correct that UMass does in fact house a relatively high percentage of its students. Uh, so, yeah, so, uh, that is the case, and it is also the case that UMass is a state institution and Amherst, the town of Amherst has essentially no effective leverage to, uh, uh, force UMass to do very many things.
Yeah, thanks, Fred. Um, Bruce, that's sort of a angle you might work in to your preamble, meaning pointing that out. And.
Uh, sorry, pointing out that.
That they do house more than many others.
Oh, yes.
Really not enough.
Uh, I would take it one step further, be, because to, to try and make this very even-handed, I think, you know, trying to get the confidence of the, of the, of the group, uh, as, as, you know, as, 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 as good actors. We would say, yes, uh, the, uh, this is what UMass claim, and yes, this is correct, they are significantly higher. However, there's another factor here that we should acknowledge for, uh, on behalf of the town is that whereas UMass, uh, has a very high percentage, um, it also has an extraordinary ratio in terms of the size of the student population of UMass to the size of the resident population in town. I couldn't find another town in the country that had that ratio. I mean, some of, some of you, Angus, you mentioned that you went to a place that had a fairly low uh, on-campus population, but I'm, uh, it, but, uh, but I'm guessing it either wasn't a huge university, or it wasn't a really small community. When you put those three things together, or those two things together, the size of the university, the size of the tertiary institution, and the size of the permanent population of the town, which is about thirteen thousand. So the number of students in UMass at around twenty-eight is more than twice the number of residents in the town. I can't find another place in the country that has that ratio with such a huge university. I mean, you might find it with really small colleges that have got microscopic uh, communities, and they themselves are the, it's like a, like a factory town or something. But where you've got a respectable-sized town with a, with an outsized uh, institution, uh, in its midst, I couldn't find another place like that.
I think this is a point we should have on the tip of our tongues in all these conversations. And eventually to get to the town council as well. And I know we've tried some of this with some of our other recent suggestions, and not gotten much support on that, certain people, but, but I, I completely.
But it's, it still means, I mean, can, the, 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 the thing is still that we can't just say the, uh, the answer to all of our problems is that the university should do more. I mean, I think we can dignify our position by being upfront about all of these and, and demonstrating that we think we understand the picture, and then say, let's talk about what we can do, and whether it's a good idea or not. Not about what should happen that we have no control over.
Yeah. Um, I have two thoughts about what you've put together, even though we haven't seen it yet, Bruce. One is that, maybe, maybe you want to send that around to us as a more useful way to get some feedback, rather than trying to go through it now.
We can't go through it now because I drafted it in the twenty minutes before the meeting.
Okay.
So it's, it's just a bunch of cards and notes.
Other thought.
It's all up here in the sense.
So if you want to, even just bullet point the flow, maybe we could give you some feedback.
I'll, I'll do that. It might be hard to do it before Sunday because I've got a large, uh, hopefully, work weekend for.
We've got a little more time.
Yeah. So it'll be early next week.
Other thought about that and this meeting might, I'm not sure it's a good idea, I'd love your all's feedback. Maybe we want to prepare something that can be sent around to the District One people in advance, just this introductory part. So that they have some time to think this through and, and absorb the information that we're offering on the UMass piece, just on the UMass piece, not the whole plan. Um, maybe it's a good idea, maybe it's a bad idea, maybe they'll just come, come armed to sort of nitpick the numbers, I, I, I don't know.
It, it doesn't feel right, it doesn't feel like that, no, uh, maybe we should have a beer next, early next week and talk this through, but.
I could see that going either way. It might, it might prevent some people from just showing up and saying, no, you must have solved the problem. But again, it might just arm people to want to argue more about details.
No, I, 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 I think, uh, I mean, I, we, it's, I'm sure we're going to get, um, uh, kind of dumped on.
Yeah. I mean, the other thing I was going to bring up later, but I sent, I think, to most of you, Nate, maybe you've seen the Amherst Current article written by Ethan, I don't remember the last name, the name, anyway, if you read the comments there, uh, it's, I think, a good representation of what we're going to experience also.
Amherst Current, huh?
Yeah. Angus, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say, I, I think we probably, I, I think we want to keep this discussion as focused on our approach to, to increasing housing in a variety of different ways to help a variety of different populations. And the North Amherst overlay is more focused on, um, undergrad and graduate students. Um, but other overlays are focused on other populations across town, and we're, we're really trying to think expansively, so I I don't want us to get too fixated on the UMass thing. It's, it's relevant to this North Amherst overlay, but at the same time, um, I think, I, I would, I would, if we were to send anything out in advance, I think it should be more focused on the overall strategy, rather than, you know, getting into UMass, um, stuff, especially because it's kind of UMass's battle to fight to, to an extent, you know, I mean, like, we, we just, we don't have control of.
Yep, agreed. Yeah, Nate.
Sure, yeah, I mean, I was going to also say that. You know, the, the reason we're looking at this, right, is we have the purpose of the overlay that's proximity to UMass, it's already multi-unit development, and so we're looking at ways to you know, it's not, you know, to me, it's like, you know, these are properties that um, have been identified from other, you know, by other planning boards, by consultants. And so to me, this isn't like a one-off, this is something that has been, you know, assessed and said, oh, why, could, could we allow you know, increased density here and fill density, and so, you know, the comprehensive housing market study, you know, the both housing production plans. And, and so to me, there's a reason to, to talk about it, and so, um, yeah, I mean, I think it is important to talk about UMass, then it's also to say, well, you know, that's, to me, housing more students on campus is one option, and another option is to do some other things proximal to the university, and so. Um, yeah, I, I know, I hope we can move that past the UMass should do it all, and so we're just not going to be constructive because, um, you know, I think I think it's unrealistic to say that we could house nine thousand students around campus, but maybe there's some percentage of that, uh, in new units we could, uh, the town could. And it's, and, and there's benefits to doing it off-campus as well, as, you know, that article mentioned, and, um, so.
Great.
And so, yeah, so I think, so Bruce, and you know, and, yeah, just let me know what, you know, how we'd want to go about it, I guess. Um, I think the meeting room is equipped to have like a digital presentation, and maybe we want some large printouts, I would just need to know you know, a bit ahead of time what, what's necessary.
Yeah, I think I'd, uh, uh, hold off on the printouts, it's just work, and, and, uh, and, and, uh, I'm thinking that we should follow up with any printout that we want to deliver, so that it can be delivered electronically and so forth, I, I mean, uh, I think we'll need maps um, that we can point to. Whether, uh, and, I guess, um, whether we should have a presentation, um, hmm. What do you think? What, 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 what did you have in, what would you have in mind as a, as a, as a, as, let's say, eight to ten slides?
Uh, yeah.
Think, think of slices that they're off. Uh, I like maps because they stay on the wall. Um, I favor, but of course, you can't have too many of them, maybe three or four, but, uh,
Uh, I make a suggestion, maybe. I, I could imagine a very simple slide set, which may be only three slides or four slides, introductory, it's whatever title, something like that. A, one slide that sort of lists the factual numbers, some of them, setting up the problem of overflow of students. Third slide, which is the whole town map with all these areas highlighted, just like you sent around just now, Nate.
Yeah.
Pointing out, okay, this is, you know, we, not to, we've had this conversation already, uh, you know, here's the big plan, here's what we're looking at, here's what's been done, University Drive, here's what's next, here's what may be coming after this. And then one close-up of the North Amherst uh, area. Um, and if that stayed up for the conversation, then we can go back and forth easily between the big map and the small map, and then more zoom in as needed for the conversation. I, I don't think it, I wouldn't think it needs to be much more elaborate than that. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think if, even with, like, to say that one slide with the overlay itself, we could just have a few bullet points, like purpose, like the framework of the zoning, you know, if we want to talk about what residential use categories or certain things, you know, I, there was that framework, um, document, discuss the planning board and just kind of hope, hopefully generate some discussion there, right, about, okay, well, what's you know, what's really going to happen with this if it moves forward with the overlay? Yeah, I think it could be as simple as that, too, I, you know, not many slides and.
Well, if we only had three or four, I might prefer that they be produced as posters, and we could stick them up on the wall, and then we, then we could keep going back to them. That would certainly be true of the whole town map on the one hand, and the overlay map on the other, and then the other piece that you mentioned, uh, suggested, Jesse, was the the, the data set that describes the problem. Um, and that could be a bullet point as well, and, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't know the room, you know the room probably better, Bruce, like, is the projection big enough so everyone can see it?
Oh, yes, everybody can see it.
Room's fallen off.
There's a big screen, it's not even, it's a, it's a video, uh, what do you call it, uh, it's, it'd be a um, I think it's, I think it's, I, I think it's a wifi or what have you, uh, Bluetooth videos.
So it sounds like we're all here in pretty much agreement about how this should go. And it sounds like Bruce, maybe you and Doug are taking on, putting this together with Nate's support?
Yes, I think that's true.
So then, why don't we leave it for you to ask us for help as needed?
That's, that's good, and the first piece will be just circulating, uh, uh, I should talk to Doug about this, obviously. I'll, I'll start by talking to Doug about this conversation.
And I'm certainly comfortable just letting you to decide how this should go.
Yeah.
Because again, I think we're, I think we're all pretty much the same page about what the goal is.
Okay, um.
Any other conversation on this before we move on, looking at timelines? Okay. Um, let's go next to some more, some more townwide thought, thinking, maybe. I'll start and share just some thoughts I had, it's not very well detailed, um, but I was looking at the, the map with all the areas, right, and this has come up before. Both Angus and Jared clearly started to think this way, like, what are some more sweeping changes we could propose? Uh, and I was wondering, it might not be all of these areas appropriate, but is there some standard change we could imagine that would be appropriate for all of them? But then pick others to add more, so like, yeah, the North Amherst one, we're talking about potentially pretty high buildings, right? But are there other ways we could look at all these properties and say, okay, well, if you're whatever, two hundred feet setback from the street, you're allowed to have four stories. Uh, and all these, you're allowed to consider row houses, and all the, are there more sweeping changes to increase density we could think about? Not for the whole town, not for all our zoning businesses, but sort of a group overlay. Right, that's where I think a lot of this started ten years ago, Nate, where they were trying to look at the multiple sites at once. And maybe that's both politically and logistically, a little. And maybe that's both politically and logistically a little well, uh, quicker way to make some broader changes. To get to get things going. Um, and again, I don't know the specifics on that. I'd really lean on Nate to help us with that. At the same time, I really like your idea that you wrote up last time, Nate, about. Taking specific neighborhoods and they're really thinking about redesign, reform, re-lay out. That'll be more appropriate for individual spots, but I don't see that. As needing to be exclusive from this other idea. Like, is there something we can do soon to open it up across town? And then continue to focus on specific areas, maybe add additional. Overlays or whatever they become. Yeah, so other other thoughts? How how else we could make some significant change?
Yeah, I guess. Oh, so, yeah, I, yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, it's interesting. The um, the ADU bylaw is gonna be uh going back to council for the first read, you know, on Monday. I'm not sure. I'll be curious to see how that conversation goes. I think everyone, you know, the concern is, you know, there's an extra unit now allowed. And will it meet the kind of intentions of what the state was thinking, or is it just? Allowing more, you know, student rentals I in in Amherst, right? So. Um, I do like what you're saying, Jesse. I feel like. Uh, you know, the town's had zoning in place for a long time, and, you know, there's a lot of growth in the sixties and seventies with multi-unit apartment complexes, and then afterwards, there was this kind of reflexive nature where the town changed its zoning. And there's, there's a lot of static. You know, zoning measures, and then there are some changes in the two thousands, which led to the, you know, the new buildings downtown, but it was really. And it really was just like a mixed-use building, right? It was a definition in one place and, but apartments and townhouses and. Kind of our density calculations, all those things haven't changed in a long time. I I'm. You know, I'm looking at a zoning map, and it's typically, right, we do a zoning change district-wide, and so it's hard to. Say, well, this, you know, here's something that's small. You know, Manny, Joe, and Pat had proposed a few things. Um, and then there's overlays or there's different ways, but you know, it's like. For instance, do we, if we said, yes, you know, duplexes townwide are just. Site plan review instead of a special permit. What does, you know, what does that do? Is that, does that actually create? Housing that we think would, you know, would. Allow different households, or is it just, you know, more of the same? I don't, you know, I I guess I'd have to. Think about it. Um, I I like the idea, right? Right. I mean. We don't, we aren't very good at defining townhouses and how they're permitted in residential areas. And so. You know, we've talked about tiered approach to apartments, and is there a way to look at townhouses? And then we apply that in a number of zoning districts if we came up with a new. Definition or classification of townhouses, for instance.
Yeah, I think, you know, what what gets really tricky, I'd love for someone knows how to do this. Is the problem is we just need more units. We just need more beds. And we've had this discussion in various ways over the last couple of years. Until we have a lot more, they're probably mostly gonna be filled by students. And that's what's driving me to just think about, yeah, let's try and open it up. Um, I I don't, I I don't know how to design specifically or. Zone specifically to get those specific uses i- in our town, given the problem we just laid out. Because I feel like even if, even if someone were building, you know, a little neighborhood of small houses. Who's gonna build that? And probably the student population is still the most attractive for making money. I I know, Angus, go ahead.
Yeah, I I think there's a couple of things that I'm thinking about. Um, I, there are um. There are a couple of different areas we we could look into that would all make changes, um, and that would make it make it easier to build. Um, so for instance. Um, things like lot minimum lot sizes is is one change that could be made to certain zones. Um. That would make it easier to build. But um, when I look at the map. Um, the zoning, the town zoning map. Um, there's a, it's a, there's a surprisingly large number of zones. For um, for our town, um, which is, which is not a huge town. Um, one thing that it's making me wonder, we have RVC and BVC. Um, and and one thing that I'm thinking that could be a lighter lift would be trying to. Possibly combine them into just village center. Um, which would allow for both, you know, business and commercial as well as mixed use and some residential. And try to make um. You know, certain major thoroughfare corridors, village centers. Where we allow denser housing to be built. Um, and those are more discreetly limited. I mean, there's not. Um, there's a couple of spots that might where this might not make sense. Um, but most of the village center zones are at major intersections of thoroughfares. Um, and we could change some of that, and and there's some of the places we've already identified. So. You know, down around Atkins, um, over on College Street, where we've already been talking about. And uh, north of, you know, the the town center. Um, as well as the North Amherst spot that we've been talking about for this overlay. Um. So I I, that's one option for thinking about about some of this. I think there's, there's a lot of other options. I think my concern is. Do it trying to push too much. Um, and we don't, we don't really know how the town council is gonna be viewing, is gonna view development in the next, after the next election. And so I guess I just worry about throwing too much at them. Um, and we have, we have a long list of proposals here. Um, and the the bigger and grander our proposals are, I think the harder it might be for them to swallow. So it's just one of the kind of balancing things that I'm thinking about.
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a good point about things possibly changing in the next couple of months in terms of council. I don't, I don't think it should stop us from going down this road, right? Yeah, we'll see what we push forward, I guess. I I can't imagine us getting anything ready very soon anyway, to be honest.
Yeah, really.
Uh, but yeah, I like a lot of what what you just said, Angus. I think it makes a lot of sense.
Um, sorry, just to jump in, yeah, you know, there will, sorry, that, you know, what the elections council will be changing. So, you know, what staff's talked about is. You know, trying to get a few zoning amendments, say, ready for the spring. And so, and there's a few that our staff is looking at, and if the subcommittee. You know, there's one or two that we think could be ready, uh, say, in March. So, you know, give ourselves six months or something to work on some, you know, an amendment, then bring it forward, I think. Um, that could be a good approach. And so, you know. I agree, Angus, you know, sometimes I've looked and said, well, could we combine zoning districts, you know, even different residential zoning districts, because. You know, what what's, you know, there are, there are a few differences, but are they enough to keep having those different districts? Um. But yeah, I think, you know, I can send the list around again. You know, even if, for instance, um, you know, we're looking at the PRP. So just for for instance, Angus was looking at that, and you know, those are discrete zoning districts. If we. Said in the PRP zoning districts, you know, one change we want to bring forward is to allow apartment buildings. Or something, right? And and, you know, and it and and, you know, we, it's a, say, it's a simple idea, it, you know, there's probably then more to consider to it, but that could be something that is just. Do we discuss that a little bit more, or? Um, do we come up with a new definition or tiered approach to apartments? And then that can be applied townwide. You know, and and maybe, you know, those are the things um that we could look at. You know, I I, yeah, I I feel like there's a lot of things we could look at. I agree. I I, to me, I, you know, forty Y is something staff and I have been looking at. Um, you know, it's a starter home overlay. It's a state program. It limits the size of homes. Um, you can have small lots. Requires a certain percent oc, you know, owner occup- owner occupancy. Um, it's pretty new. Mansfield is looking at doing it, and so essentially in Mansfield, they took what would be. Three properties and they put an overlay there, and maybe instead of getting ten lots, they're gonna get eighty, you know, and they're eight to twelve thousand square foot lots. Um, with this overlay, and so it's by, you know, and they're allowing smaller subdivision road, right? So instead of having. You know, twenty-four, twenty-six, whatever, it's like eighteen inch, you know, eighteen-foot wide roads, like no sidewalks. And they created a neighborhood, and so, you know, Greg Rochaine, the housing coordinator, uh, and we've talked about like, oh, is there places in town where we could have kind of this forty Y? And maybe it's not for a subdivision, but just to allow smaller lots, and hopefully then maybe that encourages a different kind of housing development than, say, an apartment building. Um, if you could have these even smaller lots, you know, would you get, you could even get like zero lot line townhouses, and then they're all fee simple as opposed to being a condo. Is that? A way to kind of get a different housing? You know, end user, and so, uh, you know, there's a, it's, like I said, it's pretty new. I haven't, we've been looking at it a little bit, but to me, that's something I want to explore, we're exploring a little bit more.
Is, yeah, I'd I'd love to. Think about that, too, and I I'd be curious to know what, if it, if you actually do a forty Y, what are the pieces that we can change? What can we change, like percent? Owner occupancy, lots, all these things you just said, and we change some of that and still count as a forty Y and get this worked that way.
Yeah, I'll, I can send some information along. Like, like Mansfield is going to town meeting this fall to adopt it, and so they have, you know, a zoning amendment and some ideas, you know, already out there. Um, they're probably pretty far along.
Uh, Bruce, go ahead.
I think I was first of all, so I don't forget it, Nate, at our last uh meeting, uh, the subcommittee, we reviewed these proposed, uh, this list of. Uh, uh, zoning changes, and we put it into three categories, I think. But we didn't, we we kind of did it on the fly, and you were going to. Uh, consolidate uh that, and I thought it was coming to the planning board, and maybe it would have, except we spent a lot of time on the uh. On the uh East Amherst uh local historic district thing. But uh, do you have that uh product of our last conversation, uh, where we? Uh, there were certain fractions of it.
And I think it was attached to the agenda today, Bruce, is that right?
Oh, it was. Okay, I'm sorry. I must not have seen that. I guess I saw the uh, the 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 reminder of the meeting. Okay, I'll look at that. Don't worry about that. Um, uh, on the second uh uh thing that I would mention, the. The the forty Y, I I do like that possibility. But I think that could be in some perhaps combined, or we could think about how it might be combined with a. Uh, uh, looking at the OSCD, which is also on that list, and maybe we ever, we put put them together on that list already. I don't know, but. Certain uh of the aspirations associated with creating that OSCD twenty years ago was to uh enable. Housing something like this, but not exactly like this. The forty Y is much more focused on starter and affordability, whereas the OSCD was focused on. More kind of mutually supportive community. And uh, but they're not inconsistent, uh, and one can learn from the other. So insofar as we do the forty Y, it might be that there would be. Things that would rub off onto the OSCD, or maybe that the that 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 we would decide to. Uh, invest the whole of the value in the OSCD into a forty Y and that the OSCD would disappear. I mean, it's, it doesn't seem like it, that might be the. But it doesn't seem inconceivable that that could be an outcome, because, you know, one doesn't want to have ever, you know, more complexities in the, in the zoning bylaws, so. So I'm raising the possibility that uh we looked at those two things together, and perhaps even with the possibility of uh. Of um, creating a forty Y as a. An alternative to the current OSCD. It's not a, it's way from, it's way, it's it's a long way from a proposition I'm making. It's simply a question as to whether. That line of inquiry might end up in some way in the in that direction.
Like that, I think we, we can, we can self-volunteer Jared since he's not here, and he was the one who. He's talking about forty Ys. We'll give him an assignment.
Okay.
Um, yeah. What else?
You know, I'm, yeah, I've updated the list. I can send around. I added forty Y and I added combining RVC and BVC. Um, so right now, there's, you know. You know, half a dozen under the subcommittee, you know, eight under staff, and then, you know, a bunch under kind of unassigned. But I think it's worth. Um, you know, we can, you know, discuss this, and then, you know, maybe after another meeting or two, we then say, okay, here's. Four or five that we're gonna spend a little bit more time on. I think we've kind of done that a little bit, but I think, you know, we could then really bring it back to the planning board and say, okay, here's what we'd like to do, and. Yeah, and give ourselves, like I said, whether it's six to eight months to really. Try to research some of these and bring something forward. Um. You know, knowing that. You know, once it is in discussion becomes, if it becomes a zoning amendment, there's another six or eight month. Plus long process to it, so um. You know.
I wonder if. Can we say one thing and then drop Angus? I wonder if a good approach would also be. Get a little closer, a little more organized, and a couple of these ideas, and almost. Preview to the new council in December, January. Here's some things we're working on, just so you know, we'd love you to come to some of the meetings, give input. And even if they don't, just so it's on the radar before we get to something we actually push forward. Anyway, I'll try and remember for us to do that. Go ahead, Angus.
Yeah, I just think that's a great idea, and by that time, hopefully, the housing production plan will have been, you know, fully done. Um. So, uh, I I I think that that that's great, Jesse, I agree. Um. One other thing, or I I had a couple of questions, um, as I'm thinking about the the PRP work. Um, and so I'm wondering if I can ask a couple of those real quick. Is this an okay moment? Okay, um. So I'm I'm also wondering, uh, so there are three PRP zoning areas, zoned areas, correct? The Belcher Town Road One, the one off of Northampton Road, south of the university overlay, and then North, the one that's currently a farm. Okay, um, is there, and then there's, near as I can tell, there's only one office park. Is that correct? And it's the one on University Drive?
That's the R and D. Label one? No.
Uh, the Office Park should be OP.
Yeah, there's a very small area zoned for Office Park.
And it's and it's on University Drive?
Uh, I guess I, yeah, I, my map is generalized, it's University Drive or that area of Route Nine, yeah, just right down there. Yeah.
And is is that zoned area part of the University Drive overlay?
Everything, I think it is. Everything north of um. Route Nine is, so I think there's one or two properties that are in that that are zoned.
Okay, okay. Um, because I guess one thing I'm thinking about is, is it, do we need, you know, in in addition to think about the PRP. Do we need, if there's a single zone for OP, is that really accomplishing what we want it to as well?
Right.
Um, and if that's already in an overlay, then I guess it raises some questions for me. Um. Okay. Um, and then the light industrial is, is it just the properties in North Amherst?
Yeah, so there's light industrial, you know, of um. North Amherst, and I was looking at a map, um. You might be right, um, North Amherst. I think it's only North Amherst, yeah. Okay, uh, and then, yeah, it may be the, uh, I think if if not, if it's not commercial. Um, it's the uh lumber store down on College Street.
Right, okay.
Might might be uh a relic, light industrial. I think it might be not commercial, but right, there's very little light industrial.
Okay, okay. Um, anyway, I'm just trying to, trying to think about some of these lightly used zones, um, and and, um, which I think are just. At least some of them, like the light industrial, I'm sure is is a, um, because of pre-existing structures. Um. Okay, okay, thank you. That's, that was, that was all as I'm thinking about this. I'm trying to reach out to. Some um owners of properties in PRP and OP um to to try and think about what they would find useful. Um, but um, and if anyone has any suggestions on anyone else to talk to about. Um, both PRP and OP, um, I'd I'd welcome suggestions.
Yeah, I mean, just quickly, some of it would be, I think, you know, zoning can be an opportunity, so. I think the owners are good. Some of them would also be, you know, what I think about, say, with the University Drive overlay, or what we're doing in North Amherst is. You know, if the owners aren't willing, if there's something in place that could encourage it, would then another developer, could a partnership be formed? And so. You know, we've, you know, staff, we've talked to a few owners around town, and they, some of them that own multi-unit properties. Aren't willing to undertake a a big investment to, you know, increase density, but I think if they had the right partners, they would be. You know, they haven't said that. That's just something that you just kind of inference from the conversation. So to me, it's like, oh, well, now on University Drive. You know, we have one project, I, you know, I'm. I'm like, okay, there's a few people I want to reach out to to see if there's another project that could take shape there. Um. You know, I think some of the owners are interested. I just don't know, you know, I think there's a lot to consider. Um, so. Yeah, with the PRP, I think, um, interestingly enough, you know, there's a, the zones in North Amherst. yeah, with the PRP, I think, interestingly enough, you know, there's a, the zones in North Amherst and, um, along Route nine, they're big, it looks, they're big properties on the zoning map. A lot of it's wetland. And so, you know, you could like take the PRP down off Route nine and say, wow, there's, you know, forty acres and maybe there's ten, you know, that could be developed, but um, I think it, I think it's funny. If we showed on a map, people will be like, oh, my gosh. Look what could happen, but really there's a limited development, but I think there's, I think it's good to look at it.
Oh, well done. Sure.
Fred, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just a minor, I, I think eighty-five North Whitney Street is light industrial. That was originally, uh, the Amherst Gas Company back in the days of gas lighting. And they, they got their gas from the railroad. And that, of course, abuts the, uh, the railroad and I, I'm not sure. I don't think that has actually ever been rezoned. That, that, that brick building is now apart. Mostly apartments, but not completely. There are some, uh, I, I remember wiring one, uh, plainly an industrial use, uh, in the first floor of that building. And I think there's maybe some, some of those still.
You're right, Fred. It is.
Bruce, I saw your hand pop up. You're good?
Yes, I was just, uh, what Angus is, uh, and then Fred, uh, drawing to our attention is what essentially is, is spot zoning. It's probably done back in reverse. In other words, zoning that was created to accommodate something that already existed. But I recall the conversation many years ago around Maplewood Farm uh, and what the proposition that was being, uh, put forward to town meeting to allow it to be rezoned in some kind of, uh, in, into a, into a zone that would allow it to operate, uh, more as a expansive retail restaurant, so forth. The way it really wanted to opt and, and the argument against that, I mean, the one that I remember from the time was, well, we, we don't do spot zoning and this is spot zoning. So in a sense, uh, we, we, what, what I hear, uh, Angus and, and Fred, uh, speaking to Angus, you particularly is to say, oh, we're rationalizing these things. So these, these are things that we perhaps need to eliminate in order to avoid something that we have stated for years. There's a policy that we don't, uh, want to pursue. The one thing I do say about the PRP is that I, as I said, I think before, but maybe I'm not in this forum, I don't know. That the, that thirty years ago, uh, trying to find places where, um, invest, uh, people could invest in, um, research establishments that would basically pay much higher or higher taxes than, uh, than retail, than residential, I mean. Uh, and, and trying to find these, uh, zones, uh, was what the board, what the planning, uh, staff and so forth were trying to do in the nineties. Trying to identify places where prospective, uh, research, uh, where, 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 uh, commercial exploitation of UMass research could take place and there were precious few of them. And, uh, and, and the, and I'm sure that to the people of the time, the idea that we would allow housing into that area would have been anathema because we were actually trying to avoid, trying to keep housing out. In other words, we were trying to identify places where higher tax base investments, uh, 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 higher tax yielding, uh, properties could, uh, could be. So, um, we should bear that context in mind, I think, as we contemplate putting housing, because I understand now thirty years later, the, the dominant concern in town is not, how can we boost our tax base, which it was in the nineties. We're now talking about how can we boost our housing? So times have changed, but, uh, the, the, but we still should keep our eye on the nineteen nineties ball, I think, because it, it was a real, uh, concern and remains a real concern. Well, I never had my hand up, sorry.
I'm muted. Fred, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, the, uh, the one on Sunderland Road is a case in point, Bruce. Uh, I vividly remember that discussion. Uh, that was, uh, there was a, uh, a, um, enterprise that was ready to, ready to go on that segment. And they were so anxious, they were prepared to extend at their expense, town sewer all the way down that road, uh, so that they would have access to town sewer on that. And, uh, the, I, the citizens of North Amherst croaked that in town meeting. I remember, uh, Hilda and we, we, uh, Hilda Greenbaum and others, uh, standing up and saying, look at the town symbol, the, the book and the plow and, uh, you are, uh, violating the, the, the sanctity of Amherst by, uh, imagining this. I was absolutely beside myself at that argument. Uh, and it, it ultimately prevailed. That zoning change failed in town meeting. And it's, you know, it's still there. I mean, but the, uh, the, uh, uh, opportunity, I think, was forever lost at that point. Uh, these things are never simple.
Sure. Yeah. And I was gonna say, Bruce, I think your, your reasoning why, you know, there's the PRP zoning in other zones is a reason why the North Amherst overlay makes sense, right? So that if we want to keep areas for, you know, commercial or other types of development, non-residential, residential development, we, you know, if we allow it to turn to residential, given the market pressures, that's probably what will happen. Um, but if we want to say, okay, well, are there opportunities, right, where there's existing housing that could be redeveloped? Then, you know, that's why North Amherst is, you know, and why the planning board is looks at other areas too, um, for infill. You know, there is right precious land outside, um, you know, of conservation land, institutional land that could be used for, you know, commercial, retail, industrial, whatever, research and development. And so, yeah, I think Angus, it's still worth looking at. I think it's something to consider. You know, is it, you know, right? So is there part of it that could be rezoned or allowed for housing in some nod or some, some piece? You know, I'd like to think that at some point, if we had more density, uh, then we, you know, maybe there is more, more opportunity for some of these other uses to come into town. It's just, you know, finding the right place to put everything. You know, for instance, the R and D overlay on University Drive has been in place for eleven years. It might be longer, might be fourteen years. It was never used. The idea was to try to zone a place that, right? Research ideas from UMass could come off campus. And there was actually a specific professor who had something, but it never materialized. And so it was never utilized and the zone is still there. So if someone ever wanted to use it, right? So that's what's one I see about an overlay is any other existing zoning is still there as an opportunity. Um, but yeah, I, I, and I look around, I'm like, okay, well, you know, if we rezone some commercial areas and encourage residential development, you know, then we lose that, that area for commercial. So, you know, that's why we talk about mixed use buildings, right? So even if they're baking it for a point, the idea is that there's still some opportunity to fill those if we have the ability later.
Bruce, go ahead.
A little more on the, the North Amherst, uh, just when I'm trying to, I can't find how to lower my hand. The, the, the North Amherst parcel, the P, the, the, the PRP zone up there, the thread was initially talking about just three or four years ago, there was another initiative that would have involved the, the development of that for, uh, um, a, a commercial, um, industrial use. Uh, it was the, uh, the enterprise was called the Eruptor, a funny name, but it was, uh, uh, it, it seemed like it had legs and so forth. Uh, so it, it was a, uh, but that one fell through because of the, uh, the, the conservation commission's determinations of, uh, the area that would be subjected, uh, to orders of conditions and so forth. And the, uh, the aspirant developer decided there wasn't enough land left for them to do what they needed. So that, uh, parcel has been tested recently by a somewhat erratic, uh, development enterprise or a development investor, but still tested. And, uh, so the, the wetlands up there are significant inhibition, uh, to the successful exploitation of that site and in that zone, apparently.
Thanks, Bruce. Um, this is all very good for me. I'll confess, I'm not super well versed in our own town zoning. This takes this opportunity to get there. I, I was wondering, I mean, I haven't really looked at any other towns zoning in this detail. Is this unusual for towns our size, Nate? Do you know of a sense of like how disjointed and historic and all these tiny little pockets of different zoning? Is that just how towns evolve?
Yeah. So, you know, Amherst has had zoning in place for a hundred years. And then, you know, like I said, it changed in response to different developments on the ground. I don't, yeah, I mean, I think it is. I think, um, you know, I look at other communities sometimes and you're always like, oh, why do they have zoning like that? But, you know, it could be in, in response to what was on the ground or they would want to encourage certain things. And maybe it doesn't happen. And so, um, I think the difficulty is, you know, say it's like every twenty years, does someone, does the community or planning board go back and then look at all of the zoning and it usually doesn't happen, right? Kind of that systematically or, um, and so, you know, maybe the idea was that, you know, a zone doesn't have to be in place for a hundred years. It could have evolved and but once the boundaries are drawn and there's development on either side of the zone, then it's really hard to say, oh, well, you know, let's take this business on to make it bigger because now next to its residential. But I think it's worth, you know, talking about, I think there's areas in town where there could be, you know, some combination of things, whether it's, you know, combining zones or just allow, allowing different things to happen in those zoning districts. So even if we end up not changing zoning boundaries, for instance, what we allow in the RN might be, you know, some, you know, different use classifications, residential use classifications or something that we do, do now, right? Or if we like the idea of having the PRP, um, for instance, do, do we also look at what kind of research and development uses we allow in the PRP and does that need to be updated? So maybe, you know, if someone's looking and they say, oh, well, you know, that's actually a special permit use or it's not really allowed in the PRP because it's not really clear. Do we just have to update our use classifications to capture what happens today, right? So, you know, there's clean, cleaner manufacturing or, you know, innovative workspaces that aren't the same as, you know, we might have to put those under an industrial use that's not allowed in many places, but maybe it could, it could be allowed, for instance, and even mixed use buildings, right? Some of the newer three D printing stuff, for instance. I don't, so I don't, you know, I've looked at it a little bit. I feel like, um, I think there's probably some of that that could happen too.
Do we, do we often have? Do you rather often have discussions with developers or business owners or whoever want to come in and the end result is no, sorry, that doesn't work in this spot? Or, or it doesn't never even get there because people look at the zoning and say, oh, that won't work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a part of some of those conversations. I know, uh, Rob and Dave are, are also part of those. I think it's half and half, you know, it's kind of mixed. You know, sometimes we don't hear from a developer until they, um, you know, they're at a permitting phase, right? So then, you know, sometimes they might just be talking to real estate agents or other developers and we don't hear about it to, to some point. You know, I think there's, you know, what we've seen, uh, in recent years is, you know, say in outlying areas on Southeast Street where there's the old cold storage buildings from Atkins. Orchards, and then there's some farms where people are like, oh, this would be great to have weddings or some venues. We're like, well, that is actually not allowed in our zoning. And so we've had a few in the last ten years, say, you know, half a dozen interests where the people might want to start a brewery, uh, in one of the cold storage buildings. We've had a few of those, you know, before, say like Treehouse came to South Deerfield and, uh, we said, well, you, we're not allowed to do that. Sometimes for, um, you know, more commercial, we've had a few owners say, oh, I'd like a bigger space. And then, you know, we just, there might not be that facility in town. The zoning might allow it. It's just, there's not, it hasn't been built yet. You know, say with the Eruptor, um, I agree with Bruce. I, if you actually Google the Eruptor, there's still a website, uh, talks a little bit about it. You know, then right there's the land use constraints in town with, with wetlands or river front or zoning. You know, typically we'll try to work with someone if they, you know, to see what the zoning could be and try to find a place in town. It might not be what they, what they ultimately need. And so, you know, there's been a discussion about having, say, like a downtime grocery or an East Amherst Village Center. And you know, when Atkins went, um, was in North Amherst, you know, what we heard is that they wanted so many parking spaces out front, you know, and all certain things. And it's like, okay, well, is there a big enough space where you could have, you know, a small store and seventy parking spaces? And, you know, and so it, you know, and from a planning perspective, we don't want, we, we wouldn't want the parking along the road. We'd rather have the parking, say to the side or behind the building. And you know, there were some of those discussions, um, with different property owners and but not, you know, I feel like, um, yeah, sometimes I'm, I don't know if it's, they just look at the zoning and they don't, we don't hear from them, you know? You know, UMass, I think has done a great job of building space, you know, there's, in, you know, just in the region, right, between Springfield, Holyoke, Amherst and Greenfield, North Hampton. I feel like there's, if someone's looking, they, you know, they probably look the whole, you know, corridor, right? And if Amherst is expensive to develop or it's kind of confusing and they say, oh, well, look at, you know, this other place has cheaper land or easier zoning, we might not even get an inquiry because they've already, you know, found a place closer to ninety-one or, you know, what have you.
Yes. Yes, our advantage is that we're close to the, uh, faculty teaching, uh, research space. And, uh, and, and that's what was appealing to the Eruptor, which was essentially a, um, uh, an industrial scale maker space for, uh, high-tech spinoffs. And being able to come and go quickly between the, uh, the, the spaces was what was, uh, beneficial. And, and I think it would have happened except for the, the wetland problems that we weren't able, they weren't able to solve or they didn't. They, 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 they weren't, they, they expended their budget of effort to solve is probably more accurate.
Angus, go ahead.
Yeah, the, um, I know there's a new project, was it, is it senior housing that's, that's being proposed up off of Monique Road? Uh, is that part of the, that, that, is it, that part of, is part of that land currently zoned for PRP?
So that's, that site is also where the Eruptor was proposed. So that property is the one where the Eruptor was looking. And so the, um, yeah, you know, that would be a comprehensive permit so they could waive zoning. And so, right, the, um, I think that is, um, PRP zone right now. So.
But it's only one portion of that PRP zoned land.
Right. So that's the first property zone PRP right out of the village center. And then it's like, you know, four properties north along Sunderland Road and one sixteen are here too.
Okay.
Yep. But it's, it's wet down there. Which of course is why it's, hasn't been developed. Well, Amherst is full of, uh, uh, last opportunity sites. I mean, uh, the, so much is, what's left is left because it's the least favorable for one reason or another. So I think what we're doing and looking at sites that are already developed and how we can, uh, cause a, a more intensive redevelopment is probably the logical, say, logical strategy or, or way of thinking for a town such as ours.
Can I ask another question? Sorry, um, the, um, oh gosh, the Stavros Center for Independent Living, is it shuttered right now?
No.
It's in operation?
Yeah, I, I hope so.
Okay, okay. But that's also PRP, is it not? Okay, okay. Um, but that's also PRP, is it not?
Yeah, it, I don't know. It feels like, feels like it. I mean, it's, it's all alone in a big open space. I don't know.
Yeah, I was gonna, um, I was looking at the map quickly. It might be, um, that's an older building and some of it may have been. Either it predate the zoning or not, uh, but.
Okay.
It's very much in operation. I can tell you that.
Good, okay.
Yeah. So interestingly, in that area where Stavros is off Old Farm Road, you know, there was a developer. Um, this is in the eighties had proposed, you know, like hu- hundreds of units down there with like, almost like a new, um. Um, you know, packaged through a treatment plant and everything and it ended up not happening. Um, some kind of did, um. And then I think, but then there was some rezoning that took place there. So, uh, it is quite wet down there. And now there's a lot of conservation land. And so there's, you know, some opportunity for redevelopment, but. You know, a little bit off Old Farm Road and then off, you know, Old Belcher Town Road and Larkspur Drive is where the PRP is. And Hall Drive.
Yeah.
So a different question for you, Nate. Um. How often do you interface with the other town planners? So like. If you're a little more specific, every time I drive down Amity and cross into Hadley. You know, where the storage site is in New Hall and then going up Rocky Hill Road, I think this is where there should be tons of. Beds put in. Like, it's such a great spot for many reasons in my mind. Hey, I don't know if there's a barrier to that. Uh, I know it's mostly not Amherst land we're talking about. Um, but like, do joint town projects happen often?
There's been some discussions, you know, not at my level with Hadley in terms of, say, um, extending utilities, water and sewer. For some of those areas to allow that to happen, but I don't think it happens frequently enough. You know, I was, I was, I have been, I am a part of like the Western Mass Housing, uh, group and we haven't met in a while, actually, um. And there are, you know, neighboring communities, you know, from Southwick, you know, around, but in terms of having. Uh, focused meetings with the neighboring towns, a lot of them don't have professional staff. So it might be with, say, like the chair of the planning board. Uh, something I feel like could be happening more. Um, you know, and it could be organized through PVPC to the Regional Planning Agency, uh, you know, I, I. They have, you know, priority development maps for their region. And yeah, I think it's something to talk about, um.
In particular, we're focusing on proximity to UMass for intentional student housing. They've got. I mean, they, meaning heavily, there's, there's a whole side, right?
Right, right. No, I agree. I think even, you know, when the UMass studio looked at the mall site, you know, where, where Target is, I mean. To me, that's actually a nice opportunity as well. It's, if people were concerned about it, but you know, if you. Again, have it close to the university and tra- transportation routes, you know, there's not going to be a lot of spillover into the rest of the, into Hadley, right? Or rest of the community. It's kind of like the North Amherst, right? If you can create transportation connections and pedestrian connections from that to UMass. It's not like, you know, there's going to be a ton of spillover because of those impacts.
Yeah.
Bruce, go ahead.
Um, I was thinking the same, uh, that, uh, PVPC is, is a, is, is a broker for this sort of thing. But more particularly, uh, just so we know, uh, Bill Dwyer, who's the, uh, chair, I think, of the planning board in Hadley. Is now, uh, the, uh, chair of the, um, the, the, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission Commissioners. So he's a, he's a, he's an active presence. And, uh, there's a, just a, an FYI on that. I've been thinking that I would, uh, buttonhole, but, uh, that we, the event that I went to last Thursday. Uh, it, it was, um, there wasn't a lot of, um, smooch time. And the whole thing was done around tables. So people arrived and immediately sat at tables. And, uh, so that didn't allow me the opportunity that I vaguely had in mind to just introduce myself to Bill and. And, uh, they, they basically can make, open up, chop, opportunity for conversations at that level. But that's what's in my head anyway, just so you know.
Yeah, Fred, go ahead.
Yeah, a couple of things. Uh, one is that, um. It is a fact that the Amherst sewage treatment plant. From the get-go was designed to have enough potential capacity. To include input from part of Hadley. And, uh, this, uh. Was mentioned in a, a recent newspaper article, uh, in terms of. This, Hadley is looking at using this in order to avoid the expense of increasing the size of their plant. Um, and, uh. I'm, uh. That you're, the other thing that you're up against here is the politics of Hadley, um. For example, uh, I used to own a three-family, uh, building in Hadley. And it was remarkable because it was a three-family, which Hadley does not allow. But the reason that, uh, it was an allowable three-family is that it existed as a three-family. Prior to Hadley adopting zoning. And so it can, can continue legally. Uh, but that's, uh, I remember reading a newspaper article about, uh. Well, if you look at the big picture between North Hampton and Amherst. There is Hadley. And it is a totally different animal in terms of po- politics. Look at what just is going down in Hadley right now with the, uh, override. So this is a very different animal, uh, than, uh, North Hampton and Amherst politically.
No argument there.
All right, um, maybe that's good for today, unless anyone has any other burning thoughts to share.
Now, if I, if I, if I go now, I might be able to, uh, get some, uh, words on paper for this, uh.
Great.
Intro.
Do it, do it, Bruce.
Okay, I'll see you.
Okay, thanks, everybody. See you soon.